Hello, everyone. My name is Christian Sorenson. I'm the deputy committeeman for the Democratic Party of Evanston. I'm joined here by fellow Democratic Party of Evanston board member Darlene Cannon, and we are interviewing Monique Parsons for the upcoming District 202 election. Ms. Parsons, please, please take 90 seconds to tell our members a little bit about yourself, your background, why you decided to run for District 202 School Board, and why you have decided to run for reelection.
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Christian and Darlene for having me. It's always an honor to be able to serve on this platform and to speak to you all. So I'm Monique Parsons. I am the youngest of six. I am a mother and I'm a new grandmother of a two-year-old. I'm an Evanstonian, born and raised, spent about 10 years away from Evanston when I attended the University of Minnesota. But this is my community. I came back to this community to raise my son. I made that decision when he was born to come back to the community that raised me. And, and so I came back as a new mother, wanting to get involved and give the best that I could for my son. So along with that, that's where I always start, but I'm, my day job is that of the CEO of Magal Y M C A. But my passion is, has always been youth advocacy. All the jobs that I've had have all been centered around youth engagement, from my criminal justice background to the Boys and Girls Club, to Magal Y M C A and all my volunteer activities. So I am running again because I believe that there, this is a process and there's so much work to do. I believe that in my first eight years, I was able to find out what was happening at E T H S, get a different perspective of just being a parent at that moment, and, and try to really help our students receive the experience that my son received as a high school student. And that was, everybody knew his name at E T H S. He was on everyone's radar. He received as, an excellent education. And so when he experienced that, and I heard that other parents were not experiencing the same way, instead of complaining about it, I got involved. And, and so I've been totally committed to our students. I absolutely believe that Evanston Township High School is the best school on this planet. And I believe that Evanston is the best community on this planet. And so I advocate and support both of them. And because of that, I want to make sure that we are who we say we are. And that we do the work that we need to do to make sure that every student is able to do whatever their next is. So that's why I'm running again, and that's who I am.
Wonderful. Thank you. Dr. Marcus Campbell was recently hired as superintendent. He has listed social, emotional learning, safety, post-secondary planning, and equity as four key focuses of his tenure as superintendent. What do these goals mean to you? How do you foresee prioritizing them? What skills do you have to strategically align the board with this vision? And then what measures, qualitative or quantitative, will you use to ensure Dr. Campbell meets these listed goals?
Yeah, so they're all important. And, and the complexity of running a school like E T H S, whether you're a board member or a superintendent or a teacher, is that you have to do all of that at the same time. Right? So they require talent and skill in order to be able to do that, which is why I believe so strongly in Dr. Campbell. He is a person that came up through the ranks. He knows what it's like to be inside the classroom. He understands what it's like to lead among his peers. He understands what it's like to run a dynamic organization like E T H S. And so he has the ability as a superintendent to move all those priorities along. And so I am excited to, to support him in doing that. I'm very clear what my position is as a board member. It is not my responsibility to be inside the classroom. It is my responsibility to make sure that we are not in the way of the superintendent, the only person we supervise, to run the district to make sure that students are successful. And so there is no, Christian, it's hard for me to say one is more important than others. Because I'm youth-centric, I'm always going to put them first and say that their well-being tops everything. So if they're not in an environment that is comfortable, that feels like they belong, then we can't do the rest. You know, we can't get to know them and understand their social, emotional wellbeing. We can't listen to them and figure out what makes them feel safe, not only in the school, but in the community, walking to the building. You know, and so if we're not doing all of that, then we're not applying equity. Right? So that's why it is, it's all so important for us to do. And it requires, you know, talent and skill for, for superintendent to lead us that way. It's our responsibility to hold our superintendent accountable so that he can lead the district and so he understands what our goals are. So, you know, the board is responsible for setting goals for the district. He is responsible, along with his team, for living those goals out and making sure that they are working those goals to the best of their ability to make sure that the ultimate goal is the achievement of our students take place. And so if we are not responsible and understand that we are equally, meaning the board, equally responsible for the achievement of students, then we're a barrier. And, and not a, a unit that is helping him be successful and reaching that goal. So, you know, of course, you know, we have regular meetings with him. He understands the direction that we're giving him. We will do assessments to make sure that we're heading in the right direction. And we hold him accountable, but not to bring him down. You know, we're holding him accountable with suggestions and opportunities to improve and do better because at the end of the day, we want the district to be everything that it needs to be for the students.
Thank you. Yep. District 202 has had to adopt many district, district resources to distant learning. How would you characterize the provided accommodations, both for the general student population and especially when it comes to disabled students? And what changes, if any, would you like to see made to these new programs?
Yeah, I think, Darlene, for that response, we definitely need to be better and be stronger in the support that we, we give that population. That has always been a challenge for District 202. How we administer services, how we make sure we keep them front of mind, how we also understand the intersectionality of those students that are in that population that we serve, and to make sure that their voices are lifted up. So I have to be honest in saying that we haven't always done the, the job that needs to be done in doing that. And the one thing that I would like to do and that I, I really do is, is when we receive the data, we definitely make sure that we try to, to dissect it and to make sure that we understand who the numbers represent. Who are the students? You know, we're a very small community. We can seem big to some, and we're a big high school. But we know the students that we're talking about. So I, I really like to get proximate to who we're talking to, what services they need, and how do we transcribe that so that our students, again, feel like, you know, we are providing the services that they need in order to be successful. So it is, it requires more work. And it requires more engagement with, you know, nonprofit groups that specialize in this space, that's willing to come to the table and, and also come to the table and represent the total body of students that we're talking about. And, and realize that, you know, that it's sometimes hard to make sure all voices are included, but work together to make sure that when we are making decisions, we are making decisions with every group in mind and not just a segment that is talking about it the most. But representation is key, and, and I would love to push us into that direction and figure out how we can get more of that.
Great. Thank you. Weapons detectors and student safety have been a recurring theme at Evanston Township High School for decades. And the gun lockdown incident comes to mind as one of the many moments in the last few years that are determining their new direction. The D 202 Board is currently considering whether to share access to surveillance cameras in an I G A with the city of Evanston. Where do you envision the district moving on the issues of safety, security, access, and responsibility during the, your potential time on the board? What do you feel are the rights and interests you need to balance in these scenarios? And did you read the Evanstonians' coverage in annual review issue?
Yeah, I read the, the Evanstonian. I thought it was excellent. One of the reasons why I love working at the high school, working on behalf of the students, because I love their voice. I love that they are bold enough to tell you how it really is disagreed with us, but also be very honest and upfront. So I believe that that was one of the best features I have ever seen in my eight years. How we're moving forward? Well, safety is important. It's, it's critical for us to, to make sure that that is front of mind each and every day. And the sad thing about it is that we can't stop thinking about because it is such a major issue, not only in our community, but in our world. And these are the stresses that our students are having to, to deal with, even in Evanston, right? The safety of, of walking to school and being in the building. What we do know from our students is that they feel safe inside E T H S. But that's not always the case getting to E T H S. So this issue cannot be dealt with in a vacuum. As a board member, it's my responsibility to make sure that I have the pulse of the entire community, that I understand how some segments of our community feel about safety as it pertains to being a student at E T H S. And then it's my responsibility to partner with other elected officials, regardless of what other group you're, you know, you identify with, either 65 with the city council, or even talking to our, our police department about the safety of our community so that our students can feel like they can engage and be full students at E T H S. And then as a board member, it's our responsibility to make sure that we are pushing our administration to think about tactics that need to occur in order for our students and our teachers to feel safe inside the building. And, and so we're doing that. We're having those conversations. This is like you started. This is not new. This has always been an issue. And, and with every elevation of leadership, you know, we've had a different level or layer of safety tactics emerge at E T H S. There was a time that we didn't have cameras, you know, throughout Evanston Township High School. Now they're all around and there are some that people don't know, you know, exist. So we're not going to stop that conversation. We're going to continue to do what we have to do. Because I have a background in criminal justice, it would not be wise of me to disclose what those tactics are that we're talking about. Right? It would not be wise of me to put those things into the community when they have not been well thought out yet. And they have not been communicated with the people that, that are most proximate to this, to what we're trying to do and to creating the safe environment. So I'm, you know, I'm careful about talking about what we're doing, but I do want the community to know that we are planning to do something and we have already started doing something. And it's not, you know, a day that doesn't go by that we are talking about how do our students feel? How can we improve how they're feeling in the community and inside the building? And, and what do they need in order to, to feel safe? And what should, do they think we should do? So their input is just as important as the perception of the community around safety.
Thank you. The Department of Education publishes data about the disparities in education between school populations, including on the grounds of race and disability. Note, we are aware that the data used by national and state departments of education is largely based on standardized test scores, which do not paint a complete picture of student achievement. However, they do serve as one important data point for purposes of understanding achievement disparities. Based on the information taken from the Illinois Report Card 2022, Districts 202 continues to have a large achievement gap between white students and students of color. For example, 202, 2022 SAT scores, white is 74%, black is 19%, a black-white gap, a black-and-white gap of 56%. Hispanic is 30%, a Hispanic-white gap of 45%. In your opinion, why does District 202 continue to have a large achievement gap? And what do you believe can be done to eliminate this gap? And how can E T H S ensure that every graduate is college and career-ready, particularly students of color?
Yeah. Oh, Darlene, what and why? If you know, please tell me. Because that has been the biggest question mark that we have, that I have personally serving on the board. We have tried to do many things and we are still trying to erase that gap and to make sure that race is, does not determine the predictability of how that, that gap falls. That was a goal or part of our equity campaign or agreement prior to me coming on the board. And, and it is still our commitment. We don't want race to be the determinant of that gap. So there are many reasons. And because of my experience in youth development and running one of the largest children's centers in Cook County, I know, and being a grandmother, I know that it doesn't just start at ninth grade. I know the gap does not just start at ninth grade. I know that it starts earlier on. And, and so we see it at ninth grade because students come to us not reading at grade level. I happen to believe that literacy is very important. It determines a lot. It can determine the outcome into adulthood if literacy is not attacked and addressed at a very early age. Unfortunately, it, it predicts a lot of outcomes for our young black boys. So, you know, that is a, that is a big question that we wrestle with on a daily basis. I know that literacy starts in elementary school. The high school should not have a literacy lab, but we do because we have to meet students where they're at. So we are trying many things, and so is District 65. You know, they're partnering and doing things to try to prevent some learning loss. I mean, there's Camp Kumba, there's, you know, the, the lift program. So we are really trying to figure out how to, to really transcribe and, and get at why these gaps exist. And it's no different than the, the previous question about how do we do things differently? We know how, who our students are that are struggling. We have to target more. We have to partner more because the school districts alone cannot erase the gap. When you're a high school student and if you're not coming in already prepared, you really only have about three years to figure things out, you know, in terms of what that next will be. And the next, believe me, and I don't believe that the next is, is college for everyone. Right? I believe there are some very strong opportunities to do things that are, that don't involve going to college. So we need to be ready to help our students be able to do whatever is in their desire to meet the next for them. But if we're only able to get them to a grade limit or a level academically, then it makes it that much more challenging to prepare them for the next. So, you know, Dr. Campbell has started having meetings with other professionals and leaders, not only in the community but abroad, to try to figure out, you know, what else can we do differently? How do we hire differently so that teachers are not teaching with low expectations? So that biases don't exist? You know, so that students are not being taught based on what they look like and where they live? So we are, we are really pulling the, the layers back off of the onion because it is such a huge problem. And it, it really, it, you know, it breaks our hearts because we keep seeing the numbers and, and we're like, okay, well, what more can we do? Like, how can we be more bold? The other thing I want to say quickly, I guess I'll be that one that goes beyond 45 minutes. But the other thing I want to say is we are also in a very unique moment where we have two new leaders leading our school districts. And prior to joining the board, you know, both districts came together with a joint literacy goal. I was the first to say it's not working. And I encouraged our staff to go back, rip it up, be more creative, be more bold, because it's urgent. And what we've been doing is not giving us the results we need because every rotation of eighth graders coming into the district, the number, the gap widens and widens. So, and of course, the pandemic made everything come to the surface. So we are having a joint meeting tonight and I expect to hear some more creative things that they're trying to do. The bottom line is we're not giving up. So as big as this, this, this goal is in our community, as hard as it has been, as stubborn as it has been in our community and in our nation, we're not giving up. We're still going to try to figure out how we can erase that determinant.
Thank you. Thank you very much. According to that very same E T H S School Report Card from 2022, there's also a significant achievement gap between the general population of students and students with I E Ps. For example, English Language Arts proficiency for the general population is 48.7%. Students with I E Ps is 13%. Mathematics proficiency, general population is 42.1%. Students with I E Ps, 6.1%. How would you plan to strategically position the board and influence the administration to increase graduation rates for special education students?
Yeah. Make sure we're meeting every student where they need to be met and that we are addressing every student's need. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's, it's, it's different, but it's no different. I know that if we dig deeper, those are black students. I know that race will still raise up as a determinant whether or not they have an I E P or not. And, and it makes it that much more difficult. So I am always concerned how race plays into those stats when we start talking about them and sharing them. Because at the center of it all, are we being that school that not only praises itself for being diverse or lives off the history of being a champion of equity? But are we a space that is belonging for every student? I E P or not, race or not, gender identity or not? Are we responding to every student's need? And if we are, and if we feel like, you know, we're meeting them and we're doing this, then, then we'll see those numbers increase. I would say that we're not. And, and I can't tell you, well, I can say without a doubt, it's not just because they have I E Ps. You know, so that concerns me, that there are still students that feel like E T H S does not belong to them. And, and so we have to, to get at that and figure that out and, and definitely uncover that and be very honest. As I mentioned, we've gone from a district that, you know, that has been a champion of equity and we've done great work in that. But equity without belonging are just letters that make up a word. So we have a hard job because we have, we have a community that is, that's extremely diverse and complicated. And, 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 you know, and race continues to be a predictor for many things. So when I see those numbers, I pull the onion back and I see black students at the bottom with I E Ps, with not, without I E Ps. Black students that are engaged in activities are still at the bottom. Black students that are not engaged in activities are still at the bottom. You know, so the, the factor of race is still an issue.
Okay, thank you. Culture and climate. According to the most recent release data from the Five Essentials Survey that students and staff took last spring, E T H S teachers and students are feeling more stress and less trust in the institution. In 2022, and in every year since, at least 2019, E T H S has scored the lowest on the Effective Leadership Section, receiving a designation of "very weak" in most recent survey results. How would you plan to strategically position the board and influence the administration to address the issues uncovered via the Five Essentials Survey?
Yeah. Darling, what year was that?
Well, it was 2022 and it said that, I, I guess every year since 2019, so 2019 to 2022.
Yeah, so 1920, yeah, that, that pandemic was real. And it affected a lot of people, including our teachers, our parents, our students, our faculty members, our custodians, our engineers, our safety staff. It affected all of our staff. Not to mention, we took them through a leadership transition of bringing in Dr. Campbell and, and retiring and saying goodbye to Dr. Witherspoon, who had been there for a very long time. And, and the fact that he retired at the end and beginning or down slope or whatever we're calling this pandemic is not, yeah, it's just not a good time to come or go. You know, it's just not a good time. So it is what it is. I believe it. If you're telling me that that's what the data is, I believe it. It's, it's hard to keep up the morale when you have a lot of questions, not just about what's happening inside a profession that you enjoy doing, but in life in general, the world was spinning. Right? And people were trying to keep up. Which is, you know, why we, I know in, in, where are we, in '23 now? See, I even forget. But in '22 and '21, we focused on staff wellness. And the message was that Dr. Campbell gave as an assistant superintendent was how are our, our staff? Because if our staff are not doing well, then our students will not receive well. So again, this is, we trust our leadership as a board member. I trust my, my superintendent to be on the pulse of that. And there are moments when it, it reaches the board, like if I'm in the community, which is one of the things I love about serving in the community that I was born and raised in. I am in the community. People know how to find me, whether I want them to or not. So I'm accessible and I do hear things. And, and I'll, and I know like when morale is low or when there are questions about certain things or when people are afraid because they're not hearing all the details, you know, about how we're reopening, you know, how we're addressing. You know, how we're addressing um truancy or, you know, how we're supporting the needs, the the. Uh, mental health of our students. And when I hear those things, I have an honest conversation with people that are telling me them and say, look, you want to keep this with me? Or do you want me to do something about it? And and we have an agreement and I always lift it. That's my role. That's my responsibility. I serve the community. So it's my responsibility to bring the community with me and not just a certain pocket. Not just, um, you know, a, an area that I represent as a black woman. You know, I have to be in the community, the entire community and be able to s- to share that information. With our superintendent because he's busy trying to run the school. So, um, and the only time that I'm throughout the community cannot be when I'm campaigning. And so I feel like it it is my duty to make sure that whatever I'm hearing, whatever our children are experiencing. You know, the the gun violence that's happening in the community, the um, you know, the. Health and wellness issues that our students are going through, I bring that to the table. And and if it affects our students, it definitely affects our teachers. And so that's a conversation that I have with with the superintendent. Um, probably, you know, more times that they want me to because it's important. It connects the dots. So, um, that's how we, you know, that's how we lift it up, but I I absolutely believe that to be the case. I'm hoping we're turning that around with new leadership, but it takes time to turn the ship. So my hope is that we're turning and the morale is is shifting.
Thank you. Do you feel that the budget process at District two O two is transparent and accessible, both to parents and to the community at large? What, if any, changes would you like to see made to the budget process?
Yes, I do. I think it's, that's one of the things we do extremely well. Um, we make sure that the budgets are discussed throughout the year, not just during a certain time of the year. Um, it's added to our agenda, which means that it's open to the community. Um, and our staff, they have to present to us. They have to tell us what the assumptions are. We talk about what's happening at the state. Um, board members have a responsibility of going through that packet. It can be three hundred, four hundred pages. But that's our responsibility and to lift those questions up. Um, so that is one thing we do extremely well and I don't think I would change anything.
All right, thank you. Are you in favor or opposed to school district consolidation in Evanston? What would you need to know to make up your mind on consolidating two O two and District sixty five?
Mm-hmm, this question. Um, so at this moment, I'm not for it. Um, I am not convinced yet that it will work. But I am open to having conversations if there are good ones to bring to me about how this can be achieved. Um, and it's not just because this is how we've always done it. But, um, you know, I need to know that doing this will be the best, the absolute best thing for our students. However, I will say that I'm real ripe right now for having the conversation. Because we're at this point of, you know, wanting things to turn around so much. And so like right now, because our students are feeling everything. Um, and and so I, yeah, I mean, I'm open to having the conversation, but I'm not. I'm not for it happening loosely, absolutely not.
All right, thank you. All right, when uh, when you first joined the school board, what was your number one priority? And do you feel that you have achieved that goal?
Yes, um, so my number one priority was to make sure that every student had the same experience my son did. And he had a great experience. I was like, let's go. I'm ready. And and this is going to be every student's experience. Um, no, I have not achieved that goal. Um, which is why I'm running. So, you know, I, there's still work to be done. I have not achieved that goal. I have tried. I have shifted conversations. Um, right away, the first committee I joined was the discipline committee. Um, we saw some improvement, then we, during the pandemic, we saw some decline. And now, you know, we've had conversations about the relationships we have with our police department. Um, we had conversations about um the role of our deans. And and they've been some very uncomfortable conversations. And so because I um feel some sort of way about how our students are seen and perceived and treated. Um, it's my responsibility to to be, to hold ourselves accountable and to have those conversations. Um, but it's, it takes a lot to make sure that we are able to shift. Um, that culture and and making sure that every student gets the same wonderful experience. And so that's one of the reasons why I'm not giving up.
All righty. I think this is the last question.
Okay.
Which of the board's decisions do you most disagree with? And which decisions of the board are you most proud of?
Um, I don't disagree with any of our board decisions. Um, we have conversations to get to being a united front. And the one thing I can say about our board is that we all try to keep students centered. In terms of their voice and and how we believe um decisions are made. So I don't disagree. We we don't have that kind of um energy on our board. We have rich discussions and I may disagree with what someone says and I'm able to to give my perspective. Um, but I think we're, I think we are trying to do the best that we can do and I think we're doing well. At the beginning, I said, I think it's the best school that there is. I I stand by that. And being the best doesn't mean that we don't fall short. Um, it it just means that I know that everybody in that building is trying really hard to do what they can do. Right? Um, I am proud of a lot of things. I am so proud of our students. I, you know, I I just get chills when I think about them, when I see them in action. Um, how I see them finding their voice and lifting their voices up. So when they come and they present to us and and when our student rep on the board holds us accountable. Um, and and lets us know that, no, you know, that's not right. Or what you're talking about is absolutely wrong and I'm I'm glad you're finally saying something. Um, that makes me proud to be on a board that centers students' voice. Um, I'm also proud of hiring Dr. Campbell. Um, I think this is a very good decision that we made, a great decision during this time. And for this community and for our students and our staff. Um, so, you know, those are the things that that I'm proud of, but yeah, I don't have anything that I would disagree with.
All right, well, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Um, certainly appreciate your time. So again, we will uh, we'll, we'll, we'll turn this around, get this posted. It'll be on Facebook, on our YouTube channel, on Twitter. Please feel free to share it. I mean, we'll go out, you know, we're, we've got uh members voting on our, in our endorsement session. That that closes on Saturday. Um, and then you'll, you'll get the results and uh, yeah, you know, and remember, our our endorsement threshold is sixty six percent. So it's, it's pretty high. So when you get it, you know, you really earned it. Um, you know, so it's, it's not something that we, that we hand out very lightly. Uh, our members take this process very seriously. So thank you very much for taking the time and uh, we'll get this turned around as quick as we can.
Thank you and thank you for accommodating me. I appreciate it.
No, not a problem. All right, thank you so much.
Okay, bye bye. Thanks, Darlene.
You're welcome.